All right, this is our call to the board. The regular July meetings, the district county board of commissioners. I'd like to thank everyone for coming today and anticipating the local government. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Frank Quinn and most please leave his vacation.
Bow our heads. Our heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessings and to help as we gather together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us a desire to find ways to excel in our work of sense of community. Please protect our citizens and families from this virus, in God's name we pray. Amen.
This time I'll let everyone stand and ask birthday Commissioner Hollis to lead us to the pledge.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands or nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order business, fourth order approval of minutes on June 1st, regular meetings with the supply of the package when out last week.
I might go over my group again.
Do I have a second?
I see.
Any further discussion? All in favor of that? All opposed? Or she carries? All right, next order, this is for the... June 25th call meeting.
There's the June 5th workshop, the June 18th public hearings, and then the June 25th...
Do you have to record all of them or is it also...
That's up to y'all. Y'all can do them all as one or not. That's up to you.
I was just gonna make simple, do a motion for a workshop and a third year all together, and then we'll do one for the committee. This time I perform a motion for approval of minutes for the workshop and third year.
If everybody has ready, I make a motion.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of that? Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Finally, the June 25th call meeting. Waiting for approval of minutes.
I'm listening.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we move into our public comment portion of the meeting. Ms. Kashana Smith requests me to address the board. Ms. Kashana, you now have the floor, how would you like to... Can you come forward and speak, or how do you want to do it?
Yeah, you can.
Ma'am. Yes ma'am, they're right back there on that chair back there.
But, um, thank you. But I just want to start off by saying thank you to each of you for your time and for allowing me to be on the agenda this morning. But you all know that I served as a commissioner for six years here. I did say in this same room, but you'll come with my team, we're not in the same room where I served in the meetings, but there there are different times that we're going through. But I know how it is to serve. I know how it is, you know, to be you all choose. So I want to say publicly that I appreciate each one of you, you know, for your service, for your time, and what you do for this county. I know that being a commissioner can be a very thankless job. So, um, and I feel like if it wasn't in the sign of mine, if it wasn't a journey that the board put me on, I probably wouldn't have done it. So, um, you know, I appreciate each other. So, one of the first things that I wanted to do when I did become a commissioner was to make sure that myself and the rest of our board, that we were being transparent. That we were making sure that we made the citizens and the people that own us in and the people that we represent, I wanted to make sure that they felt welcome and that they felt that they could come to a meeting anytime they wanted to. So one of the first things that I wanted to do and that I was very hopeful about was to change our meetings from, at the time it was nine o'clock in the morning, to a time that was in the evening, that was convenient for people that worked in Dublin or worked in Bay Area but lived in this county, pay taxes in this county, that love this community and care about this community. I felt like it's very important to give them the opportunity to have a chance to come to the meeting and to know, you know, what's going on if they choose to. And just like right now, this morning, we don't have three people here at the meeting, but if they wanted to come, they don't have to go and take time off from their job to get to come and to know what's going on in our county and to see how our taxpayer dollars are being spent. So, like I said, that's one of the first things that I wanted to do. We went back and forth as a board on that. I was, you know, it didn't go through at one time, and then we changed it to where we had meetings at nine o'clock in the morning, and you remember this, and then the next month we had meetings at six o'clock. We had constituents showing up at nine, thinking the meeting was at nine, and it was changed. So, we went back and forth for a while as a board. And it wasn't until Lance, you, and Kayla were on the board when we finally made the decision that this is the way we're gonna do it. The meeting is gonna be in the evenings. We all agreed as a board that we wanted to be transparent, that we wanted the citizens to be, feel welcome. We wanted people to know that, hey, we don't have anything to hide. If you don't come, fine. If you do come, come on, you know, and see what's going on. So we made a decision together as a board along with Lance and Kayla that we wanted to change that meeting to the evenings. So that way people wanted to come, they could come, and they didn't have to get off their job in order to do so. So, um, I was very disappointed back in, I think it was December or beginning of January or so, when I found out that the decision had been made to change the meeting times back to nine o'clock in the morning. To, and you know, it just appears and seems as if, you know, we don't want people to come to the meetings. And so that's not, you know, what our goal is, that's not what we want. What I'm here today asking and requesting is that we change it back. I was told that the reason for the change was because of Commissioner Mayor Mettenfield, who quit before his term was up, and for Commissioner Quinn us, because they were working out of town and it was inconvenient for them to have the meetings on Tuesday mornings at nine o'clock. So, that's what I was talking about. So, um, the Tuesday, not having the meetings on Tuesday, the people that I've spoken with, and I've spoken with a lot of people, and there's not one person that disagrees with me that the meetings need to be held in the evenings and not in the mornings. Nobody is saying specifically change it back to Tuesday. I'm not requesting that y'all change it back to Tuesday. It's fine if you want to leave it on Monday, if that, you know, makes it work for the constituents and make it work for you all as commissioners. But at least it's changed the meeting time to the evenings. I don't even care if it's nine or six o'clock, but it needs to be six o'clock or later because people who live, work in Dublin and work in Bay Area, which is a, and you know, I don't know the exact statistics and the exact numbers, but the people who work out of town and live here, they need a good 30-minute rest period or so to get off and be able to come. So six o'clock, six thirty, seven o'clock, just the evenings, not nine o'clock in the morning, where majority of this county that's working and paying taxes are at work. Let's see. But again, ladies and gentlemen, I'm just requesting that we do what I feel like is the right thing. And, you know, Lance, you and Kayla, y'all have agreed with me as part of the board that I serve now. Y'all agreed that the right thing to do was to have a meeting in the evenings and not in the mornings. So, you know, because the people that we have that voted for us, that vote for you all, the people that you're representing, most of them, if they work, they couldn't be here this morning if they wanted to. So, um, again, I'm not asking that you change the day, but I am requesting that y'all please change the time back to the evenings to where myself and other taxpayer citizens who love this county, want to know what's going on with this county, where we're not forced to get off of work just to know what's going on with this county in this year's meetings. And if it's, you know, if the time is not a convenient time, if we're trying to do what's right for us, but what's convenient and good for us as commissioners, if the time is not good, then maybe this is not the season to serve. You know, because there's seasons and timing for everything, but thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Liz. Um, I do want this to be on the agenda for next month, so we can actually vote on it.
And Cheryl and the folks, if you don't mind, you know, maybe at some point, do y'all have any minutes that I'm here to discuss?
Um, I would say it's still exactly on the agenda, but, um...
I would just kind of like a little bit of feedback, kind of know y'all's feelings and, you know, just kind of, you know, if you feel like it needs to be in the morning, just kind of share with us on that. Like, as I have dialed off with many people in the community, and I actually spoke with somebody from each of your districts, you know, I called Mr. Powell, I called some others, and, uh, not called, but I sent an email to y'all and requested that y'all come. Because I wanted to give the two of you guys, Quinn... Wow.
No, I'm sorry, I'm listening.
Okay. I just never asked somebody to listen to me and not look at me.
I'm sorry. I was listening at the whole...
Yeah, thank you. But I just, you know, I wanted to give you and Mr. Powell the same courtesy that I gave to Lance and Kayla and to Layla by talking to you and letting you know what else come to the meetings to talk about. Because one thing, you guys are commissioners, it didn't feel good to be blindside. So that's the reason why I sent that email before I came, so that way we could have some dialogue. So since I didn't hear from y'all, I would like to hear from y'all, would like to hear your thoughts.
Right. Well, I'll tell you my feedback on that. I do work out of town. Uh, to serve, I feel it's a privilege, a really, really good privilege. As you know, this can be a thankless job.
I understand.
It really is. Uh, I, before I made my decision, what I wanted to do, it was this way for forty-plus years, in nine o'clock in the morning. If you had a problem, you called your commissioner. Your commissioner took care of it. If you didn't get any service of supposedly getting any satisfaction with your meeting with your commissioner or your conversation, you came to the board. And if it's a problem, you come to the board because it's a problem, not a possible timeframe. For me, it's convenient. It really is. I, um, I've worked, I've been at work for three more years, and I plan on working the best I can. And my livelihood comes from working out of town. It is convenient for me to miss limited morning. I drive back from Atlanta every day, twice a day, there and back. So for me to miss three hours for a Monday morning meeting, which is not a problem, but for me to drive to Atlanta and then come back and have a meeting and then go back again if I'm staying, that's a problem. But my constituents in my district didn't have a problem with it. I'm not sure you spoke with, but I spoke with about forty-five people and asked them, would it be a problem? And their response was, we elected you to make decisions for us as a majority, not as an individual. I said, well, I appreciate that, because I'm a big taxpayer in this county as well. And, you know, it works for me. And if there was a problem, my constituents would have said something to me to start with, which they did not. Now, I'm not sure if your constituency, well, you're, you are the constituent for Bay Area.
Right.
And I've not had any feedback or kickback from any of them, but not saying they're not out there, but they do not come to me. They elected me, sixty-six percent of them.
Thank you.
So, I said, they elected me, my constituents elected me, to actually work for them as a majority vote. I'm good to work at the board once, but for me, I like it where it's that.
Okay.
And it's not just me. So, anyway, that's, that's my feedback.
Okay. And I appreciate it, and I won't even respond to your feedback.
Oh, I got this.
I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you, ma'am.
I would like to run to this bed and vote for a motion out, searchers, for what to be made.
What's happening?
I'm just saying in general to the commissioners.
I didn't hear what you said.
I didn't hear it either.
I found a word up before for a motion out, someone wants to make a motion to move the meetings. Step up on the next ones.
I moved it to be changed to six o'clock in the evening, back to where it was.
Do I have a second?
I see.
Any further discussion? All in favor of that?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Can I just need some feedback on Mr. Powell?
We've spent, we've spent our time on this, the board made a decision.
Well, I don't like, I mean, she wanted to hear, she's a citizen.
We can do that in a formal meeting, she won't reach out to each one of them.
It's white that plans.
Yeah, she's a citizen, I understand, she's on...
Like I said, everyone's available anytime this is a formal meeting.
It's white that plans.
This is a formal meeting.
It's white that plans.
Next part of the...
That's real nasty.
Next...
That's real nasty.
Well, I...
That's real nasty.
Uh, next fourth order business before the board, Commissioner Faye Gillis, um, has, wants to address the board about agenda. Commissioner comments, motion discussion.
Yes, I learned that the commissioner comments were removed from the agenda, and I would like for them to be re-added. I really didn't see what was on that. Anyway, I was told last month why they were removed. It was because nobody wants me to say anything. But, um, I would like for them to be re-added to the minutes, to the agenda. And the next thing I was concerned about was the motion and discussion. I've been told at meetings that, um, we ain't gonna have no question and answer session during discussion. Now, I've talked with ACCG, and I think everybody knows this anyway, but once a motion is made and you ask various discussion, that's the time you ask questions and get clarification. So, is that the way y'all see things here, or not?
I'll answer any questions, I guess.
My question is, I have been told when I asked the question during discussion and the motion was made, we ain't having no question and answer session today. I was told that at March meeting. So I talked with ACCG, somebody from there, and they told me that when that, during a motion, when discuss, when during discussion, it's when I'm supposed to ask questions and try and get clarification on things. Is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
That's what the discussion is for.
Okay, so it's just that time, you just don't want me to ask a question, or something?
Anyone can ask any question they want to during discussion.
But you're just not gonna respond?
I mean, I may not know the answer, if I don't, I don't know exactly what you're talking about, but if you have anything in particular, um, that you would like for the board to discuss or change upon, if you'll lay that out, exactly what it is and get it...
The question I asked at that meeting, at the March meeting, was, why are we changing auditors? And then I was asking if anybody had checked references, or I started to ask that point, and you told me that you weren't have questions and answers there, stationed there.
I don't recall if I said that, or if I did. You know, it is for discussion, and, you know, I'm not one to answer every question. If there's something that you need to know that we're not addressing at that time at a formal meeting, and, you know, having the right representative county attorney, maybe he can get you an answer where it needs to be.
But the thing about it is, you won't even allow me to ask questions, so...
You're more welcome asking any question. I can guarantee you I can answer every question.
Okay, all right. But that's, that's the proper time to ask, during discussion after a motion is made, right?
During discussion, anytime you discuss any motion that's on the floor.
Okay, all right, that's what I need to know. Is there any comment about that the commissioners' comments been put back on the agenda, or is that gonna be just off forever?
You know, as, as the chairman of the board, I provided over the meetings, and I seen where, where commissioner discussion kind of opened the door for meetings to go around, uncovered points that were on the agenda for that day on the board. It just become kind of a free-for-all, no order. Uh, meetings have to have order to conduct business. Any, I have an open door policy, I think everybody on the board does. If any discussion needs to be done about anything, or any commissioner has a concern about anything, I think the time to do that is, you know, in person, not always in a formal meeting, as we see now. Uh, that's part of the reason that I, as the chairman, advised and requested from the commissioner, comments to be taken off the agenda. And I, you know, unless someone wants to make a motion, second, and say, hey, we gonna have a motion, commissioner comments on the agenda, I'm not inclined to add.
Okay.
Because I don't think it's, you know, it's not the right place to... Each commissioner needs to be abreast of what business, that's why we have the agenda. We set an agenda to take a business before the board for that meeting. Okay? Every commissioner, just like we get our packets, we like to know the little background of what's going on before we come in here. If you get a commissioner comes in and they go off on a tangent left field about something that no one else has any information about, or that directly involves someone else who is in our county government, they should be able to be here to, like their terms double up. And when, when that other takes place, we don't have opportunity, and I don't think it's fair to no one in the room. So therefore, we struck it off the agenda and I haven't been...
Okay, well, actually, that question I asked, that, I used myself in the example, and it was just actually about, um, spending. And every time I ask a question about spending, it's like I'm getting shut down.
I, I, you know, like I said, if you have any question about, if you can, should, come to, like commissioner, like, uh, council ever told you the last, what was the last meeting, one meeting before, if you're right, if you get with him about any isolated instance that you're talking about, that we can look at and see if we have a problem, we would be glad to take it up.
Oh, yes, I'm definitely doing.
All right.
I was just asking.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else? All right. Um, next on our agenda is Commissioner Kayla Hollis, which goes furloughers, courthouse renovation update, and LME project update. I will advise what we started to do now, the later on agenda, we have a bid package here for our LME, 2020 LME approval. You got it, ma'am.
Well, I'm gonna start with the courthouse renovation, that LME project. So which LME project do we have? Knox Mill?
Yes, ma'am.
What about the other ones that we got on the list?
The only one that's on the 2020 bid is Knox Mill. We left the money, we left some money out for some, um, buy some rock for Mr. Cherry and some garbure maintenance that we didn't, we haven't, we've been living on that.
So what's been decided about Cedar Grove? Anything on that?
Um, well, like I said, we haven't, the only thing that's been approved thus far is the resurfacing on Knox Mill Road from where we left off at the fullway with the Red Bluff Road all the way to 29, got a complete progress on Knox Mill on the west side of, um, nineteen. The, if there's something that needs to be attained to on Cedar Grove, um, like I said, we have some extra money that we did, we didn't spend all our LME on projects, there's some money left. If there's some places throughout the district, y'all gonna look at for some patchwork, we got some money there, we're gonna do that.
That was my one question, Cedar Grove and tobacco trailer.
I think tobacco trail is the one that's on the TIA project.
Okay.
Pretty sure.
And when is that?
That's the one out there by, on the 46.
Yeah, when is that?
That is handled through the state, that's handled through the regional, uh, TIA accounts, that has looked, that they just show up and do, and doesn't bother.
That's with the commission, the region commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I just want an update on the courthouse, because we've been talking about it for a long time, I just wanted to update.
Does anyone want to give that to you?
Um, I can never think of the guy's name, but the one that come and visit us with, um...
The architectural firm.
Right. He, um, he did come by, I want to say it was maybe the week before last, and with all the COVID stuff, they've been kind of, where they couldn't do what they would normally do, and plus we had all the rain before that too. But he did come and they, they got, I think, Mr. Donald with the road department come and helped him, and they climbed up there and, um, and looked at some things, and they have, they're, they are starting the process. And I'll try to get a more, um, maybe something, an email that I can share with everybody on exactly what his next plan is.
And that's just the roof?
Yes, ma'am.
How about the inside of the courthouse? That's, that was my name.
Well, I, you know, kind of, we have the board got the risk, because first thing, we don't want to spend the money here to forget their fees.
I understand that.
So, as soon as we get that, then we're gonna start coming down.
And last thing I had was the furlough. When are the employees supposed to come back?
That is up in there. I don't know, there, I know the furlough, the, uh, the, the extra, um, I don't know what it's called, the funding, it helps fund the furlough. I know that's coming to close.
I would give some...
Because of the increase of COVID, um, you know, we got locations in the county right now, the bank's now closing down there. There are...
Closing offices.
Law, lobbies, um...
But the employees still coming to work, right?
Ma'am?
The employees still coming to work, right?
I don't know what they're calling it.
Yeah, they are. That happened, the furlough come about anyway, because who approved it?
You were, he was addressed with it, I think, and then it went out, and I think all, I think Connie and TJ talked to, I think, for a while. Is that what we're talking about?
Well, the regional furlough, I have to go back and pull notes. I don't know how the regional furlough come about, if I approved it, or the board approved it, or how it was, but it went out and we sent a big call.
And that regional furlough, this furlough?
But, well, what happened was this, what happened is, well, two weeks ago, we started, we started getting this back, and, um...
TJ's office was affected because...
TJ's office had, they had to come in and shut it down, have it run off, and, so...
And then all of their employees had been in our office as well, and over at the courthouse. They had, Jackie and Jessie had both been in our office near about every day that week, and, um, and it was, I think, I want to say maybe he found out on, I don't know when he, I did, I found out, I found out about it on the Sunday after it happened, and I think she had maybe been in there. I want to say, I, for some reason, I'm thinking it was like maybe Thursday, and I know Thursday and Friday Jackie and Jessie were both in our offices and over here in the Deeds and everything.
And I understand that, and I want everybody to stay away, as far as just furloughing, I just don't think we should have furloughed.
Actually, there's a text went out, well...
An email.
A text without saying that you all were going to furlough.
The text went out about the furlough, everyone was filing.
No, I wasn't.
I think you responded that you weren't, and you weren't...
A majority was filing.
But you don't even supposed to give a vote over a text, you may seem too loyal. That's not what we do.
I will give an actual vote of action just to consensus.
And that's why I sent out the addresses on a weekly basis.
Well, yeah, you know...
I think I had, I think I had sent out a text about it, and then I had asked y'all to read your emails and to respond to your bills.
The girls didn't feel safe at the office, they requested, you know, hey, you don't feel safe up there, so they didn't want to work. I'm gonna say they didn't work, they didn't feel safe.
I don't want to work, I just don't think that's...
No, no, it's that, they didn't feel safe in the office, uh, people come in and out, we have a tick, this is unsubstantiated time right now. Who knows what the right thing is? So sometimes the easiest thing to do is, is to be prevented, and that's a measure we took.
Why would that have been a commitment would be to, like I put in the email, say temperatures, everybody come in, the employees wear masks, and have the people that's coming in, have them screen with their temperatures, and they wear masks. I just don't feel like we need a clause.
No, I've been there, you know, I haven't, the office has been open, I've been there, I didn't furlough.
Well, I understand they need, because they're six feet apart. Their offices are six feet apart, so I just don't see why they shouldn't.
That's why I put in there, we should address this on a weekly basis.
With this, we got that they need to be at work.
I'm with it.
Yes.
I'm with it.
Because one thing, the states have to back up, for one thing, and everybody else is working, that, I mean, they may not be letting anybody in the building. You call for an appointment.
And I'm fine with that, just not going to...
All right. Well, um, y'all must have a weekly meeting to meet the board, if we're gonna have our employees in office or not?
No, I think you need to decide today, they need to come home, pay to work, and if they need to be out, they need to take some leave or something.
All right, I'll vote for a motion first for the furlough.
I'm moving that furlough be cut out or something, when people come back to work, taking the permitted measures that the governor and the, the president has recommended.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of terminating the furlough, or that?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Most who cares? Projects, problems off?
Anything else?
All right, next order of business for the DFAC's board appointment, we have a letter from their board requesting a replacement of Ms. Gina Harris, so I open the floor this time for an appointment for a DFAC board appointment.
I think the letter says she wanted to continue, so.
She would do it again, right.
So I made a, I made a motion for her to continue.
I was sick of that.
Any further discussion? All in favor of it or not?
Aye.
All opposed? Most who cares? All right, twenty-twenty census training location, I, I'm gonna change, is there anything to add?
I do, um, this lady in, um, let me get my paper. She said that she, I don't personally know her, but she said she is a Treatland County citizen, or maybe originally from Treatland County, that they're needing a place to do training for the census, and um, it needs to be a place that they can spread out enough, and, and, and she's talking about a, a good amount of people, um, so I don't really think that our conference room would be big enough, but we had thought about possibly, um, if Ms. Kathy is okay with it, because the, the senior center is still closed to the public, I mean, they're still giving the meals out, people are still doing the drive-through, but um, I was gonna, if y'all are okay with it, I was gonna talk to Ms. Kathy and see if maybe they could use the dining room of the senior center.
You know, as important as a census is, and I, I, you know, I don't know on the floor, I've tried to come up with ideas for us to get our census report increased, I feel myself that, you know, with all this COVID going on, I would say where the county needs to accommodate any kind of mask gather. And that's just my, I mean, y'all, like I said, if the board wants to do something different, I.
Well, I told her I wasn't sure how the board would react, but I did try to give her some other suggestions, I told her she might could call the city, they might could use the, the clubhouse thing or something, you know, maybe um.
Well, I hear it said eight, on the eight or ten days.
Well, that, that's, she, she said that it could possibly be more. And, and see, they also have to have space to plug in, they're gonna have computers, and that they, and she also needs desk space, so we do have the one conference table, but they're also gonna need additional tables moved in, and this is gonna be, I wanna say, it, does it say weekly, I think it's gonna be a weekly thing, and um, I didn't know if that would interfere with us having meetings.
I say, I say go back to, I mean, we're holding our state board out on the front, for long, with some tents, you know, that maybe offering something like that, and that might draw some attention, say, hey, what's going on up here? You know, that may just bring some awareness to the census area, or also get away from the risk of being combined with the crowded door.
Is this.
What if she does like, the body, something like that, because I, I mean, um, and we've got the, what about the library over there, is it?
I think so, yes, ma'am, I believe so.
That big room back there that they voted in?
They might could use that too, um, I could, I could ask Ms. Jeanne about it, see what.
They could use, I, I don't know if the same person has to be in each, you know, if they struggle with one person, but they can get us, put one over there and one over there, because they can, like, twenty, is it twenty-five or fifty now? It's forced to be.
I wa, I think it, I think it's fifty now, I believe.
So is this training for them to start going, because I think they're gonna still go through the door, what is this training for?
She, um, I guess this, just like training them how to use the equipment, you know, the, the pad, the iPad things and all that, I believe is what it is.
I think you need to be trying to look at stuff.
Yes, I mean, and I told her I would try to think of, you know, some ideas for, if, if for some reason this didn't work out.
But is she talking about the school? That y'all make your sense or something?
I'm not sure.
Hey, we can off, I tell you, we could off, this is a local authority building, it's got this training classroom in there.
It's got wifi into?
No. I'm not sure.
We could find out, and, yeah, that's a big room out there, they have a couple of big rooms out there.
Just start a counter, start a discussion, you know, about this, we can have a feedback on making a decision. Do they get enough of everyone? All right, the uh, next order of business for the board is the LME project, the project is taking on June eighteenth of first bid, first low bid was East Coast basketball, two-hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars, every dice came second, two forty-nine, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and socks destruction, two hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty. This is for the LME project, for completion, resurfacing Knox Mill Road, uh, need a motion to accept the bid at this time.
I make motion to accept the bid.
From the low bid, East Coast basketball, got motion to accept the bid for East Coast basketball, two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and six cents, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion?
Have we used that before?
Well, any further discussion, I call for a third, all in favor of it or not? Aye. All opposed? Most who cares? All right, um, last minute from table, the AC unit problem.
This is actually a different AC problem, so, yeah, this is that, um, this is for the senior center, um, it is working right now, too, they're, they're able to get it working, but it's another situation where they're gonna continue to have problems with it, this is what's cooling the front lobby area, and kinda like where Ms. Kathy's office is, and that front area.
Of course, last one, the health department?
Yes, sir.
What were they in office for as we?
Ms. Kathy in there?
No, 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 he and Erica, he was in office.
He just come by to tell me what, uh, the four H office was having issues as well, but they got that taken care of. It's that time of year where everybody's AC is messing up.
So this total is quarter of one?
Where you can replace the coal, or twelve-one to seventeen-fifty, that's supposed to be counted the patch deal, to, and then you have to place indoor outdoor, where it is installed, four thousand for the grand area, four four hundred for the carrier, and have five year long compression coal, and your own parts planer. I love tracking what all the other resources is, so I'm just, so we have one somewhere. Am I reading that right?
Do I know?
Like you're doing, like you're replacing coal, got a patch here for seventeen-fifty?
Right.
Is it working now?
It is right now, but if y'all wanna table it till it comes up again like we did the health department, that's up to y'all. But I, I think this is a good opportunity just to tell the board as a whole who might not realize this, you know, like, in budgeting, this is stuff that I, I'm learning as I'm learning to do the budget. Whenever we make a budget and we have a budget set, and then we have really big expenses and we go over budget, this right here is prime examples of how that happens, just so our new commissioners kinda know that, um, we can't, we can't know that two or three AC units are gonna go out and we're gonna have to spend four, five thousand dollars apiece on them, that's something we can't budget for, and so, I'm just, I'm learning stuff, so I'm teaching, I'm gonna tell y'all stuff too, I'm sure y'all know that, but I'm just, you know, letting y'all know that this is the stuff I'm learning as we're working on budget stuff.
So this is seventeen-fifty versus eight-four hundred?
No, it's four, four thousand.
Okay, four thousand.
One, one of those different brands, one's a grand bear, one's a carrier.
Okay.
So that's pretty awesome.
But it is running now, just so y'all know.
Make a motion to table it. To a later.
Motion, do I have a second for table this?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of it or not?
Aye.
All opposed? Something happens, comes back up, Sandra reaches back up, definitely don't wanna be up very high. All right, uh, now, sorry, do you need balance reports? Financial reports at this time, Canada General Fund Cash, one million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents, still up, the city in the bank, and you see the other special accounts, and what they.
I just remind everyone that we, now that we have moved the bank over, we're moving banks, we're moving from Colony to Bank of Soberton, Colony is still running, and most of our, um, these small account balances are still at Colony, and we do still have um, some money at Colony in our general fund, but just reminding everyone that we did move a million dollars out of Colony to the Bank of Soberton, because now that we're in our new year, we're gonna start transferring these funds over and start working out of the Bank of Soberton. And we have not officially closed June out yet either, just so y'all know, we're still, um, usually we can't actually officially close the year out, probably be in August sometime before we actually close, um, the year out, um, so if you notice that, like, down here at our percentage, we're at one oh two, that we should go back to being even, we've still gotta do our, um, we still gotta make our accrual adjustments and do our monthly reimbursements, like from the nine-one-one, their salary reimbursements, so that's gonna, that's gonna affect that, that should change that sum.
So everything is in, as far as taxes, property taxes, everything is in?
Penny brought me hers, I wanna say it was maybe Friday, I think Penny brought me hers, we.
That's not reflected in the first name, right?
That's not reflected, that's right, it's not, and, uh, the sheriff brought his, and, um, and Penny brought hers.
All right, if you have any further questions, let, please balance, let that occur, uh, conclude our post portion of the meeting, appreciate everyone for attending today.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.